I'd like to call this Freeburg Community High School District Seventy-Seven Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Perrish?
Here.
Mrs. Staub?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Henning?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Gout?
Here.
Ms. Googie?
Here.
That's a quorum, let's rise to the pledge leader. Pledge leader.
Students, alive, in the United States of America, and we do a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing of Jesus Christ.
Okay, do we have any agenda changes this evening?
Uh, we do not.
Okay, this time, I'll open up the floor to public comments. Any public comments this evening? Okay, see if none. We've all had a chance to look at the consent agenda this evening, do we have any additional corrections? Seeing none, need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Henning?
One second.
I'll start with you, Googie.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Motion passes. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Uh, we had a finance committee meeting prior to this that we talked about the levy. Uh, we do have some action later on and we'll kind of review that discussion.
Okay. This time, we'll move to the student members' report.
So, this month, we had parent-teacher conferences. Some concerns with that were, um, that they were only ten minutes and that that wasn't enough time for the parents to really get a good discussion with the teacher and get a feel for how they were feeling with the students. Um, and another thing was that a petition went around so that we wouldn't have school the day after Halloween. And we don't have school the day after we have parent-teacher conferences. So, a thought was that we could move parent-teacher conferences to the week of Halloween, just a thought. Um, we also had Red Ribbon Week, which was sponsored by the Saz and Save Clubs. Um, this past Sunday, we had the SDHS Foundation Run. Um, clubs helped out with that. I know the band played there and the Interact Club helps show runners where to go places. Um, cross-country finished up their season. Um, at regionals, the boys placed second and the girls placed first. At sectionals, the boys and girls both placed third. And many personal records were set at their, at state. Football also finished up their season and varsity had a record of four to five and JV had a record of eight to two. Their banquet date is set for December fourteenth. Um, volleyball season ended and their varsity record was twenty-three fourteen and they were regional champs. Um, with golf season ending, Drew McKillop and Chloe Jansen both received Class A First Team All-Area. And for soccer, Noah Stark was awarded honorable mention for all-state school soccer. Um, the, for basketball, boys and girls seasons have both started up. Um, the Interact Club, four members went down and helped with a Rise Against Hunger Foundation and packed food for, to send to other countries. Um, literary club attended Dear Evan Hansen at the Fox and they were able to meet and get things signed by some of the members of the cast. Molly Nguyen participated in their first fall conference at McHenry. And, um, FFA attended Nationals in Indiana. Um, Taylor Miller, um, received the American degree. Uh, and was the first female in eighty-seven years of Freeburg history of FFA to receive this honor. And it was on the fifty-fiftieth anniversary of women in FFA. Um, the FFA Chili Cook-Off, which was supposed to take place tonight, has been postponed until next Tuesday, which is November nineteenth. And something that I had been thinking of was, uh, putting a suggestion box out in the lobby so I could get more students feedback quicker and like just be able to get their suggestions.
Mr. Gout? Any questions or comments?
What was the reasoning behind that? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize. The suggestion box is a good idea to get more immediate feedback from people that maybe feel uncomfortable going into.
Maybe the shop can help you with that. What was the reasoning, uh, behind the wanting the day off from Halloween? Was it anything other than, uh, you stay out too late?
Yeah, basically that. It was just something that I saw. It was a petition going around online, but I thought it was something worth mentioning, just as, as a student voice.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the principals' report.
All right, first, I have some introductions for you tonight. Um, for the teaching staff tonight, I have Mrs. Anne Minor. I'm not sure. Right there, I saw my class, I, it's totally close up. Anne is our junior student, junior senior guidance counselor. She also sponsors the yearbook and the scolibal. And then Mr. Christopher Goss over here is our director of music and choir. So, they're here representing the teachers tonight, so welcome, both of you. And then Mrs. Dusty Ingles, who I was going to interview later. Um, she is our ag science teacher and sponsor of FFA and she's gonna talk a little bit once the kids get going here, so, okay, so welcome. Okay, so, um, parent-teacher conferences, as Justice mentioned, we did have those. Um, we had over five hundred and sixty-one parents show up for those parent-teacher conferences. And those are just the ones that signed up online, so we also had a lot of walk-ins. So, um, ten minutes may not seem like a lot of time, but when you're trying to fit in that many people to see all these teachers where, you know, we have to kind of keep it a little bit limited. We did have them at fifteen minutes prior, um, and it just wasn't enough time to get more people in. So, the more we can get in and make contact with the parents, the better. So, um, successful night, very busy. Uh, we have a lot of new teachers this year and a lot of parents that were wanting to come in and talk about their students, so it was, uh, it was good two nights. Um, really great news for Freeburg Community High School. Um, Freeburg received the exemplary designation for the school report card. Um, also known as a Tier-One school in the state of Illinois through ESO, which is considered what's called the Every Student Succeeds Act. This is the federal act that replaced No Child Left Behind. There are four designations and Freeburg is in the top designation for the first time in a very long time. Um, that is given to the top ten percent of schools in the state of Illinois. Um, SDHS was rated in a number of indicators, including English Language Arts Proficiency, Math Proficiency, English Learning Proficiency, Graduation Rate, Science Proficiency, Chronic Accentism, Climate Surveys, Math Graders On Track to Graduate, and College and Career Writingness, Certified Arts. So, I did put a couple of the highlights there for you, um, this is in your folder. So, just growth-wise, on the ELA growth, forty-one percent in twenty eighteen and fifty-one percent in twenty nineteen. Um, both are above, especially this year, the state average. Um, SAT Math Growth, forty-two percent in twenty eighteen and fifty-four percent in twenty nineteen. And Science Assessment, sixty-one percent in twenty eighteen and sixty-four percent in twenty nineteen. Um, graduation rate for us is ninety-four percent, nine graders on track, ninety-seven point two percent. All this information can be found on the school report card. So, that's really great news for our school, very proud of our students, our staff. Um, there's a lot that goes into this, it's not just standardized scores, it's everything from the climate of the school, the financial climate, it just takes everybody to make this work and just really happy and, and very proud of our district for this. Um, tonight, I'm keeping this pretty short, we actually have a student presentation tonight. So, um, Matt Grab and Colin Coblen recently competed in the National FFA Convention in the Agro-science Competition. They are going to share their presentation with you. Before I introduce the young men, John Grab is back here and John is the president of our FFA Alumni Association. Okay, so he's here tonight and his son, Matt, and Grab and Colin Coblen are gonna show you their national presentation tonight, so welcome.
While they're getting ready, um, I'll tell you guys just a little bit of background about this project. They did compete at the Ninety-Second National FFA Convention and Expo. Uh, this was a great honor, we had thirteen students in attendance there, two of them were these young men and then Taylor Miller was there getting her American degree. They placed at a silver rating, so this is ran like a science fair, if you guys have ever been to like a county fair or a state fair, they essentially give them like rankings, kind of like the ribbons that you would see. And so, there are bronze, silver, and gold ratings. They compete against students from all over the country, they were selected as one of the top twelve projects in the country. And they compete against students of all age groups, so, um, you can actually continue with your science fair projects even through college and the FFA, um, through like the first year. And these gentlemen are juniors, they qualified as sophomores. So, we're really excited to see where this might go. Uh, there is an opportunity for us to carry this on in our program and, um, grow these endeavors. I've had two young men approach me in the last two weeks, very interested in starting a science fair project of their own, they're currently sophomores. Um, so, we're really excited to see where this might take us in our program as we continue to grow. And we are very thankful for the support of our alumni that was here and made all this happen. Um, having our program go through three ag teachers in four years, four ag teachers in four years, actually, we couldn't do this without our alumni that's continued to support us all this time and, uh, without our school that's continued to help us and you guys and all of these endeavors. So, um, being represented at the national level, top twelve in the country, the National FFA Organization is the largest student organization in the world and we have over, um, five hundred thousand FFA members, so, we're really proud of these guys. And I'll let them do their presentation, traditionally, their presentation would take anywhere from, what, seven to ten minutes and then judges would ask questions. So, if you guys wanna play the role of judge, you are more than welcome to ask them a few questions once they finish. Thank you.
First thing we're gonna do is relaunch a little bit, we're not gonna be as strict and uptight as we were at the competition, we're gonna have more fun. Um, but, I'd like to say, this year was made by the industrial arts class, uh, it was given to us after we qualified for the Nationals. Um, I don't know where we were hanging that, the ag building was always a Matthew, but I have heard this made hallway. So, you might see that in the school here and I'd like to thank the industrial arts for that. All right, so, uh, yeah, we started the idea of this project with, uh, just wanting to have fun. We competed in science fairs before, this is just an idea we had that we couldn't really have fun. We simulated hail damage on soybeans with a shotgun. It was something that we, we enjoyed doing, me and him both liked to hunt and, uh, be in the outdoors, so it was something we could do together that we liked to do and we also do just for fun. But we tied it to something we could learn from and really, really use for both of our futures as we wanna be tied into agriculture. His grandpa really settled out the idea instead of just going out there and blasting soybeans for the heck of it. But, uh, um, it was really, really just the initial idea was to have fun and enjoy doing what we like to do.
Yes, two years ago, me and Matthew were in a, was that the district competition for science fair? Both had different projects at the time. And we're just looking around at other projects and this young kid, uh, took the different spread patterns on shotgun, like shotgun bullet size, thought it was pretty interesting, we were looking at it. And my grandpa saw us checking it out, walked over and we were talking about different projects and all of a sudden, we just kind of like started getting ideas like what we could do and we came up with this idea of shooting soybeans with a shotgun. And just kind of took the idea and ran with it.
Yeah, his, his grandpa's Tom Range, in case any of you don't know that, that is our former ag teacher. Um, yeah, so he basically told us that, uh, we could use this to stress soybeans, which is something that naturally occurs in things such as hailstorms. So, we created it to where it would simulate hail damage. Uh, we did this in order to find out what would happen. I mean, you, you can't, uh, you can't control a hailstorm, if a farmer has a hailstorm, you have to know what happens. Plus, we wanna know any kind of agricultural improvements we can make in the world, 'cause that can help not only us as people and as grown adults, but also the industry as a whole and that can create food for the millions of people that live on this world. Uh, Colin explains how we, how we did this project.
So, we planted these beans in the middle of June, June fifteenth. And the way we simulated our hail damage was, you can see right here, we get on top of Matthew's grain bin with our ten-gauge shotgun. And we went onto the field and we measured out six, or five, six-meter areas. And we shot into three of the six-meter areas. The other two, we didn't shoot into, 'cause those were our controlled areas. The beans that we'd take, that would just be normal growth without hail. So, we took our first simulation at the V-four stage. This is the fourth trifoliate stage, this is when the plants like starting to form leaves. And our third simulation was at the R-three stage, this is when the plant is starting to begin pods. And then our last stages we shot at was the R-six and seven, this is when the plant is starting to mature and is starting to put beans in the pods. So, we shot into these beans twelve times into each group. And once the beans got to the harvest time, we took a hula-hoo and we took three samples out of each group. This is when we took them up to the shed to be hand-shelled.
Yeah, we hand-shelled each individual beans, I don't know, each individual bean plant out of each individual trial, I don't know if any of you are familiar with agriculture at all. But for some of the, the V-four here, it took us probably forty-five minutes to an hour to shell out roughly fifteen to twenty plants of beans just by hand. It was very difficult, there's a lot of times where it was like, I really wanna quit right now, but, uh, we, we kept going and we're, we're happy with it now. But, uh, we hand-shelled them to ensure that we got every, every bean, we got the most accurate results we could. Uh, this, because on the sample size we had, we couldn't use that amount, it wouldn't have been accurate, it wouldn't have filled properly, we would've had just unequal amounts of harvested soybeans. We, yeah, like we said, we used that, we used the hula-hoo to make sure all of our trials were the same and, um, we could get the most accurate results possible, 'cause that is truly something we look for in our science project. We noticed that the V-four stage actually grew back better than any of the other ones, we pre, we did predict this, had it had the most time to recover, um, from the hail, as in, compared to that of the R-six and R-seven, they had been shot only a couple of weeks before harvest, compared to these, had been shot two and a half months before harvest, they had more time to recover. Plus, in the V-four stage, the plant is also thinking about growing upward instead of just producing pods, whereas in the R-six and seven stage, the plant's only focus is putting on pods. So, once it knocks half that plant off, it can't think to process more growth at that point. We did notice that the V-four stage actually yielded better than the control, we got more soybeans. This is where the project comes in really handy for the future of agricultural use. Stressing soybeans has proved in other occasions, uh, in recent studies, that it can help yield, stressing soybeans is a good thing. There are other ways we can do this that are more economical besides shooting them. Um, we just, uh, we wanted to prove that this was an idea that could be used and still have fun with it.
So, in Canada, farmers actually roll their soybeans, like when you see a big roller to flatten, uh, flatten out a road, they take these over their soybeans. They found this out totally by accident, so, in Canada, their soil is usually pretty wavy, rocky, so they use them to flatten them out. But, you know, in farming, sometimes you get behind or the weather's bad and I guess they thought, oh, we'll just go over the soybeans, it couldn't do that much harm doing. And then all of a sudden, they started seeing better yields in those fields. So, they took them to other fields and they got better yields again. So, now, many, many farmers in Canada roll their beans and it's starting to trickle down to the US, Montana, and North Dakota now do this. There is better ways also, uh, even me and Matthew did this this year. We sprayed a herbicide on the beans, which is called Cobra. Cobra burns the plant, which is another form of stress, to do what we were doing besides shooting them.
Yeah, this is important, we, in, for both of our futures, we'd like to think that we're gonna be involved in agriculture. Um, but Cobra is something that's been around for a while, but is newly being used to stress beans and it has become a great idea, it's been, uh, not strictly Cobra, but other herbicides that would burn them have been put in chemicals that you'd spray for weeds. And it burns the beans just a little bit in order to enforce that stress. Um, what we found is that stressing these soybeans can greatly help them if it is stressed in the early stages. That is simply because, one, they have the most time to recover and, two, they are still focused on growing up. And when they are growing up, they also kind of panic and they grow out and get real strong. Um, I've used an analogy as a bone, when you break a bone, it grows back stronger than it was. So, that's what the bean does, it grows back stronger and sturdier, therefore, it can support and produce more pods and hold those off the ground and be sitting there ready for harvest. Um, this applies, like I said, to both of our futures, I wanna be a farmer, I'm gonna be a grain farmer, I'm gonna be involved agriculture all my life. He has a different background, but still gonna be involved in agriculture with plants that react the same way.
Yes, growing on a fruit, growing up on a fruit and vegetable farm, I realized one day when we were working on this project, that a bean plant is kind of the same as an apple tree. So, when we prune our apple trees, we prune the tops off, so the apple tree focuses more on growing out, producing more limbs, which then will produce more apples. So, we thought, maybe a bean plant's like this, when we simulated our hail damage on the bean, it takes off the apple coriander stem on the plant, which is the very top of the plant, which is allows it to grow up. So, when knocking that off, the plant didn't focus as much on growing up, but making a sturdier plant and growing more apple, which would produce more pollen.
Yeah, we thought this was something, like I said, we could enjoy doing, but could also use for our futures. This is something that if we, uh, can gain better research and prove our point in more scientific ways, uh, we could see great agronomic and economic outcomes from that. And that can help not only me and him, but also the whole world as far as food, I mean, burgers are being made from soy now. Uh, I don't, I'm sure everybody here's eating at McDonald's, your burgers are made from soy. So, we need to create more and more soybeans and also apples, I like apples, there's a lot of people like apples, we use apples for feed, um, for different animals. So, as the population grows, we need more food, this is something that we can use to get a better economic and agronomic outcome for that in order to feed the growing population. Um, we just wanna thank you guys for supporting us and giving us the opportunity, um, to learn and have teachers that can help us this. Uh, we know we're working on new opportunities to compete in more CDEs, I know me and him like the ag mechanics, I know that's kind of been running around a little bit. We think we can do real good on that, but there's tons of other CDEs that we can compete in thanks to you guys and your support. Thank you, if you have any questions.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
I've heard a lot right here.
You're a lot smarter than I am, like I said, but...
Well, when we sit there and shell beans for four... I had a good conversation about, about the guy here.
So, what's next? Are you done with this or do you have, what's the next...
Okay, so, this is our project from act, I guess we started this after freshman year, because then we competed with this in March of sophomore year, right after sophomore year in June at state. And then now, this is our, technically, our sophomore year project that we're competing for at Nationals just a few weeks ago. So, we had started our junior year project, which we started right after our freshman year, which was basic, or right after our sophomore year. And we, uh, sprayed these seeds with Cobra, 'cause we figured this is something we can extend on this project, but also prove a more economical way to find the same results. That project's done, it's been done, was done before we competed with this one, so, yeah, try not to mix up too many numbers and ideas. Um, but we definitely see a future in this idea going forward.
Not to mention your record books.
Yeah, we can make record books and also compete in that forever.
Grandpa and Mrs. Ingles are ganging up on them and there's another contest called the, our proficiency areas and it's where they document their agricultural experiences and they can do one on their research. And so, now that they've competed nationally, they maybe are starting to see some value in taking that record book and being able to compete in a proficiency area for, um, agro-science research at the state level and potentially that could qualify them for Nationals. In a different contest, a little bit of a different way, it would be individual, but based on their experience as agro-scientists and, and the research side of things. Yeah.
Great job, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank the board and the administration for your support of the ag program. As you can see, we've got people doing, or young people doing outstanding things and, uh, it wouldn't be possible without your support, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I have a, questions for Jill on her principals' report. I have a question on the, uh, graduation rate. If that's ninety-four percent, but that ninety-seven percent of the nine graders on track, so how does that kind of fit?
Well, there's a couple of things that you can change for our graduation rate, anytime a student is dropping out and they can't help out until they're seventeen, so we unfortunately do have, you know, a couple of students, within the course of junior, senior year, that decide not to finish. Um, also, so we have some students that are on a certificate route versus a diploma route and that's in our, with our transition and high school kids and those programs are invaluable, but we do get, take a hit on that as well, graduation rate. So, it's not just cut and dry, who walks against diploma, who doesn't, there's a, there's a number of things in that rate, that's why it's, it's a little bit lower at that level.
I was just kinda...
No, it's a good question, very good question. I, I wondered that myself, true, true.
We have fluctuated historically from, I mean, we had one year that we were fairly low and again, there was issues there, but we also have been up ninety-six, ninety-seven percent graduation rate, so it, it's, it's per class.
My question is, uh, in the past, they've had to expel a few kids from the tribe and stuff like that, does that count against the graduation rate?
Yes.
Okay.
That may change a little bit now though, like we said, the one hundred, because even though we expelled, we still provide services and they go to safe schools, so that hopefully will curtail that number a little bit, but, absolutely. In some of the years when we were low, I know we had one year where we had, there was kids that were expelled for something, one hundred, so...
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the superintendents' report.
All right, um, uh, let's get to D. Uh, I also would like to, uh, kind of brag a little bit about our, our recent designation as exemplary. Uh, there was only three schools in the seven-county area, three high schools that were rated as exemplary, the last year was just one, was Triad. Uh, this year, uh, Triad didn't make it, but it was us and Columbia and the SCU that did make it. Uh, it, it's, it's very exciting, it's, uh, a lot of hard work, uh, put in by our, uh, teachers, uh, Ms. Young, Ms. Kronk, and, and our students. So, that's something that, uh, we're pretty proud of. Um, lastly, Kendra handed out an envelope for those who are going to the triple I, that's got your expense checks, 'cause we're, we are a week early. But also, there's an itinerary in there, uh, for that. Uh, I'll contact you guys and tell you the specific times that I'll pick you up that morning, uh, but other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions? Okay, let's move on to old business.
Um, had, uh, Mr. Haas was interested in talking about the possibility of, uh, rescheduling the December board meeting from Tuesday, December seventeenth to Wednesday, December eighteenth, so, I will, I'm gonna take the floor.
Um, it, both this, this and Greg explained to me that it was, it was done back in, uh, June or April, something like that, that we approved that, couldn't come up with the old, uh, old list to disprove it, so, uh, but I was surprised that it, uh, it was so early. Uh, with both this month, uh, you're not leaving until next weekend, I, I thought historically, we had done this November on Monday before we left. Uh, I didn't know what the reason for the December, uh, moving to so early in November.
The December is early so that we have enough time to turn the levy in. So, we have to have, to turn the levy in both Washington and St. Clair County and we have a certain timeline to do that. So, we typically do that up to give us those working days to get the levy turned in, uh, so that's why it's early.
It's early.
Well, basically, it boils down to, I, I can make the eighteenth, I can't make the, I can't make the, uh, Tuesday, the, I can make Thursday, the nineteenth, excuse me. Uh, um, I can't make, uh, Tuesday, the, the seventeenth.
So, but... The Thursday leaves us only really that Friday to get both of the levies turned in in St. Clair and Washington County, so we like to leave a couple of days at least. So, the, the eighteenth is, that leaves us, that's a Wednesday, that leaves us Thursday and Friday to get that taken care of, but, um, so it's...
Is it physically turning them in, uh...
Physically, you have to take it to the courthouses and turn them in.
Okay.
But there's, there's three locations that you gotta go to, correct?
I did it.
St. Clair County and Washington County, yeah?
Okay.
But the information would all, is all available, uh, isn't it? I mean, we'll have, we'll have the information...
Sure, but you get a snow day, you get something happen at school, I, I, I like to leave myself a little bit of time so that we're not rushing.
That's, that's why there's seven of us, all right? So, leave it, leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to item B.
Uh, just, uh, this is kind of an extension of our discussion about the JROTC. Uh, I wanted to just, I, I am, I am in favor of moving forward with it. Uh, my concern is, when I look through the applications, one of the big things is you have to have a room for it, we don't have a room. And so, um, I mean, I can fill out the application and send it in, they're gonna show up, they're gonna say, where's your room? I'm gonna say they don't have one, they're gonna throw it out. I, I just don't know that it's worth going through the application process right now until we have the room figured out.
They can't share rooms, there's no...
I mean, we, we just don't have the rooms, I mean, they, they would not have a dedicated room, when you go through it, they're asking for dedicated rooms. There's a lot of other things, we gotta talk about curriculum, we gotta talk about working with a paid instructor and, uh, I, which I think we can try to work through a lot of that, but physically having... But physically having a room just for them is, is just not in the works right now.
Gary?
I think, being a fellow, I think they have nerves in the evening, that they meet after school, like two or three, maybe once a week, or three times a month, or something. I see all the things about, the meeting is room so-and-so at four o'clock, and stuff like that. They don't meet here in the day, I'm sure at East, they meet after school. And I don't know if that's a possibility or not, or, you know, they just have extracurricular things, they're doing after school. And I notice all kinds of, I remember all kinds of notices about the R O T C meeting at four o'clock, in room so-and-so, or, you know, something like that. So I'm just assuming, either they've got extracurricular activities they're doing and planning, or they actually have the people there after school, so I don't know.
I understand, these are classes they teach during the day. These are classes the kids attend with the instructor.
Like I said, it's probably, maybe with a drill team, doing other things like that, that they have. I don't know, they post it all over the school all the time, around four o'clock.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Just that I'm extremely disappointed. I was really looking forward to this. I, I understand the reasoning behind it. I just don't want it to fall, I don't want it to fall to the wayside either. So I realize we're looking at trying to get more room here. I, I just wanna make sure it doesn't, we don't forget about it. I think it's a valuable, would be a valuable addition.
I agree a hundred percent.
Is there a square foot requirement for the room?
No, it just says a dedicated room.
But I'm sure they're gonna look at it and see...
Well, they can do a tour, my, read through it, they come in and do a tour questionnaire. And one of the things is, you know, do you have the instructor, do you have... So, the room, the room's gonna throw it out.
Okay, well, that being said, let's move on to item C.
I don't know why you didn't see that coming.
Let's go to item C.
Just a quick update of the storage shed. We have done, we did a lot of work about three weeks ago as far as getting it set up. Mr. Kanaki, Mr. Haas had group of students out there helping lay out the building. We have not gotten the building permit yet, but we are, if we have not ordered it yet, we are gonna order the culvert and get that work done, where you get the road put in, and then get the fence in. Once we get that done, we'll be able to get into that area easily with the equipment, so.
Have you ordered the kit yet, or the...
The kit, no, there's, we're building this, no, 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 no. We're building from scratch.
Right, right, but you got to order the...
No, no, we haven't ordered anything, but no. No, we're gonna get the concrete pad, cord, and then we'll work through all that.
Any questions or comments on this? And D?
Met with architect Mike Staub and our former architect, Mr. Greg Brown, which was nice to, to see him again. Both are from FGM. It was to discuss specifically our options as far as the building. So my question to them was, number one, can we go up on the south end? And then secondly, can you do that work while there are students in the building? So they're gonna look into it. I had, found our copy of our plans. Mike took that with him, so they're gonna look through. Their feeling is that there should not be a big issue with the seismic, that they think we should be able to take care of that. They, they were a little more concerned about, what are the elevator size? The shaft that we have now would actually meet the requirements? But they said it's pretty feasible, and actually economically, it would probably be cheaper to go up than it would to go out. So they are going to try to get me a definitive answer by December. And then once we get that answer, then we kinda talk about what our next steps are, and schedule some more building and grounds meetings, and look at that, so. It was a positive meeting.
Any questions or comments? Move on to new business.
Annual business of agreeing or approving the agreement between SWIC and FCHS for the running start program.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two non-motion passes. Item B?
Kind of, well, this is just to start a conversation. I'm not asking anybody to vote on anything tonight, but we are, have had discussions about the possibility of eliminating class rank. Basically what we do is we, kids get a GPA from their class, and weighted classes gives you a little bit bigger bump. What we have found is that we are finding issues with students. One, that are showing more anxiety lately because of the number of weighted classes that we have, and the students wanting to take more classes so they can be number one in the class. My biggest concern is that we have students, because of the number of weighted classes that we've added, like we added statistics last year, the report, I think it was last year, that now we are getting students that are just taking these classes just for the bump in the GPA and the, and the class rank. And, and they're not taking the classes because they need statistics to get into this college, or they're, they're going to need statistics in, in college. But they'll wanna take statistics and calc, which are two different avenues in math, because they both give them a bump. Or we've got, I can't remember how many, science classes that are weighted classes. They wanna take all of them. Well, most of them don't need to take all those classes, and we're just seeing an, an issue. And the idea is, if you just take away class rank, they still would have GPA, that there, there's very little fallout. And the fallout is, they're just not listed number one on lists that really don't exist. And the other issue is, we typically take the top students and they, they speak at graduation. So those, in my opinion, those are the two big fallouts from the issue. There are some other things, I'm gonna let Mrs. Jung talk a little bit about it. Mrs. Minor just here, our junior senior concerts, she has talked ahead of time. She said she would be happy to answer any questions. There are instances where actually having a class rank is for kids. Ms. Jung has included a little sheet in your folders. Ms. Jung, you wanna kinda...
Sure, we've been looking at this for a while. And the first time we talked about it, I was like, this is such a different concept. It's different than what I, how I went to school, it was always a valedictorian, servitorian, those type of things. But those scholarships are kinda long gone, and people don't really look at that anymore. Looking in Illinois, over a lot of the colleges, and not just Illinois, a lot of the high schools are no longer using GPA. If you're looking at scholarship opportunities, or you're looking at college entry and getting accepted, they're looking at test scores, they're looking at their GPA, they're looking at their volunteer work, they're looking at their essays, a lot of our kids go to interviews now to get these scholarships. You know, the actual ranking of it, honestly, so many schools can water down how they rank students, and you know, some, some schools don't have weighted GPAs, and all of a sudden, kids have a five point oh, when they're not taking nearly the rigor that our kids are taking. There's a lot of things that go into it. And along with what he's saying about the, the high level anxiety, some of these kids are trying to take every single class out there to try to be number one. Some of them can handle it. They are, they are brilliant, they can handle it, it's no good deal. A large number of them are not. They're taking up to almost twenty-one credit hours, which they would, you know, at a college level, when most college classes are fifteen to eighteen is a full load. And they're not handling all of this very well. We have a large number of colleges that are no longer even looking at the class rank. And some kids, if you look at this, I put an example. So if we take a kid from our school, and we take a kid from another school, and our kid has the same, they have the same ACT scores, they have the same GPA, but all of a sudden ours is ranked and this person's not, this person's getting in and our kids are not. Because if you have a B-plus student, which is a great grade in high school and a great average going to college, but all of a sudden you have a whole slew of people in front of you that are all A-students, and you're falling at thirty, forty percent of your class rank, you're not gonna get in. The zoo was a definite example that we had, where a student met the college requirements for ACT, met the requirements for GPA, but because we had the class rank on the transcript, that kid did not get in, compared to other kids that had the same ACT score, the same GPA. This is a trend, it's, it's changing. And like I said, sometimes some of the stuff's a little hard for me to think about that change, because it's what has been done, it's what schools have traditionally done. But because colleges are moving away from that class rank, they're not giving scholarships for valedictorians, they're not, they're giving them for test scores and all those things. This, this is a chance to kinda really start looking at what's gonna be best for the majority of the students. I'm very proud of the kids, all of our kids. You know, and, and we have kids, when we show up with five or six, you know, valedictorians, they work their tails off for it, there's no doubt in my mind, you know? But again, that's, that's a small percentage of kids, considering all the kids we have in this school. And all kids, whether they're straight A students, or AB students, or BC students, you know, we wanna give them the best opportunity possible to get accepted into these colleges. And if class rank is something that's gonna start holding them back, it's just something that we want to consider looking at. Again, it's new, it, it takes a lot of thought. You know, I, I know Mr. Frank has said he's not looking for an answer. Just to start looking at this and start examining this, where we're going with this, and what's gonna be best for our students in the long run. So anyway, the sheet I gave you just has reasons why to do it, reasons why not to do it. I know there's concern about, well, who's gonna speak at, at graduation? You know what, we have, we have wonderful student council presidents that give a speech. We have a lot of students who are not, maybe our top students, that are wonderful speakers, that could also do something. We have the options. All the kids would still, by their GPA, have the opportunity to be ranked, not ranked, sorry, designated as cum laude, summa cum laude, which deals with GPA. I mean, they would still be recognized. So again, not asking for an answer, but, you know, as we move forward, is this something, you know, that we need to think about, what's gonna be best for the kids? Yes, sir?
I agree with you, but the, the one negative example, and I'll give it because I have a student. The student was an A, was a valedictorian back in the seventies. And the student scored extremely poorly on all the tests. She was number one in the class, but she was below average. On the test she took back then was the, I believe, ACT test. And if it went on the ACT test, she'd have never got into college. But she went to because she was valedictorian. And she studied four or five hours every night, and she had to do ten times what the other kids did, that was just smart in her. But that's the only person I know that was, would have been negatively affected. And she turned out, heck of a girl, heck of a, went through college, made A's, and very successful, I might add. But it was a matter of, boy, she, I don't know if she scored bad on tests, but, but if you look at her, you say, man, if she made C, she'd been lucky, according to test results. But she threw that one right out the window. But she studied five or six hours a night to, to do that, that was her goal.
I, I, I agree. There, there's kids out there that are not great test takers, who have tremendous careers. You know, and again, that's what I grew up in, in the seventies, the eighties, that, that's how it was. But if we're, you know, if our kids are starting to get, you know, it's gonna be detrimental for them to even get accepted, because we're ranking them when other schools are not ranking them. I just feel like it's something we need to kinda examine and see, you know, what do we need to do, what's best for the students in that?
I agree, I'm just giving that one example. That's an example I know, because I was, I was still impressed, you know, to this day, I don't know if you give it.
So anyway, we just put some stuff together. I know Mrs. Minor has put a lot of stuff together. That second page of your third page was just summary, oh, that's really small, sorry about that. Was some responses that she had reached out to a number of the colleges that our students attend. Eric Missouri State, Bradley U of I, S I U C, SLU, you can read down the list. And, and asked them, how are they dealing with schools that do not rank? And then they gave additional information out to the side. A lot of them said it's not even a consideration. SWIC, which was interesting, with the top twenty percent scholarship. I mean, if our students are meeting the, the test scores and the GPA without the rankings, we potentially could have more kids get scholarships at SWIC. So again, there's just some additional information. We can reach out to more colleges. She tried to focus it on mo, the schools where a lot of our students attend. You know, and if there's further information you would like us to look at, we're happy to do it. We just wanna make the best decision possible for the kids.
Any questions or comments on this? I know we get this information just a few days ahead of time, so it's kinda hard to really absorb it. So I think maybe we should think about it and then talk about it in the next meeting.
So as far as timeline, we're, we're probably on a fairly strict timeline if we would like to implement this for next year. One thing that wasn't mentioned, this would go into effect for just the sophomore class. So the, the junior and senior, those kids that have basically spent several years trying to get that designation, they would still have the ability to get it. Sophomores are only eligible to take one dual class, US AP history. So we would kinda bring it in with that class. So as far as the timeline, if we're interested in trying to get this done for next year, we probably need to make a decision by December, I would say. I don't know what we can do in January, but January we'd be pushing it, because we need to really kinda talk to the kids. Again, the idea is to try to push the kids in the classes that they're interested, the classes that they need to be successful in college.
I think we can make the decision at the next meeting, this, this, let everybody just have some time to think about it and consider.
I would encourage you guys, if you have questions, to send it to us. Send it to me, I can get the answers, instead of just waiting to get to that meeting, because it'd be a lot easier to kinda give you...
The information, when we was gonna implement it was a big thing, but the students had already taken them. We was gonna implement it next year. That answered a lot, I think.
They've already put in the last one, tears.
Okay, let's move on to item C.
This is for the tax levy, the two thousand nineteen tax levy. I had the meeting earlier, we kinda discussed what our EAV is, what we think the EAV is gonna be. And again, this is a, one of the biggest guessing games the schools have to do every year. The recommendation is to set the EAV at three hundred thousand dollars. It's current, currently, three hundred million? I told you I'll get this right when I put it down. Three hundred million, it is currently set at two hundred seventy-eight million. But we are thinking there is going to be a larger than typical increase this year. If we do that, we will have to have a truth in taxation hearing, and that would have to go in the paper, I believe, the December fifth paper. So this is just the first reading. The final levy gets set in December.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the first reading of the two thousand nineteen levy, and that's presented? Motion?
Second.
Stop. Start with you, Gary?
No.
No.
Aye.
Aye. Aye?
Aye.
No. Okay, we do it. Come up to pass it. Do you have any board correspondence?
We don't.
Okay, let me addenda items. Do you have a reason to go into closed session, Mr.?
We do personnel decisions, and some student discipline matters and possible education.
Do you have a motion to go into closed session? Don't move.
Second.
Sorry, you, Vicki?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes, we're now in closed sessions. Thank you all for attending. Okay, we're back to closed session.
Moved to accept the resignation of Ms. Sunny Smith as assistant softball coach effective for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
And I moved to approve the hire of Mr. Jeff Hall as assistant track coach for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Don't move.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. We have a motion to adjourn this evening. Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.